To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. I would like to invite David Leslie, Parish Associate from First Presbyterian Burbank, to lead us in the invocation this evening. Will everyone please stand and remain standing for the flag salute?
Thank you. Please pray with me. Oh God, we acknowledge you as Creator of all that is and the giver of every good and perfect gift. We are grateful for the privilege and the blessings of living and working in the city of Burbank and for those who govern the city, the employees, the various boards and commissions, and for this city council. As they meet tonight, we pray for your discernment and wisdom to be with the council members, both individually and collectively, as they deliberate, discuss, and make decisions. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And tonight, to lead us in the pledge, I'd like to invite members of Troop 204 to come forward. And their leaders. Come on, join us.
All those in uniform, please right-hand salute. Those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I believe that a couple of the scouts are here to work, earn towards a citizenship and the community badge. Right. Okay, welcome. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Fudos.
Good evening. Happy to be here.
Good evening. Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anthony.
Present.
And Mayor Telemontes.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to advise the community that there will be five periods of public comment tonight. Yes, you heard it right. Five periods of public comment. Members of the public make comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and during the public hearing, public comment period. Public comment for the reports to council will be taken in person only. The first period is for general public comment on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item except the public hearing. If you would like to participate in the general public comment over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Additional in-person-only public comment period will be available after each report to council. The second public comment period is for public comment on the public hearing. For the public comment by phone on the public hearing, we kindly ask that you call 818-238-3335 after the general public comment period has closed and when the public hearing begins. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the families who lost their loved ones, as Hurricane Ian made landfall in the state of, at a category four strength this past week. Our thoughts and prayers are with the residents in the state of Florida. Thank you. We have four announcements this evening.
The following are announcements for October 4th, 2022. The California High Speed Rail Authority has released the draft environmental document for the more than 30-mile segment between Palmdale and Burbank. The project section will connect two key population centers in Los Angeles County, the Antelope Valley and the San Fernando Valley, by linking future multimodal transportation hubs in Palmdale and Burbank. The public is invited to the online open house on October 6th from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. The public is also invited to the public hearing on October 18th from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. More information about the project and events are available on the city's website under news. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the planning board for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2025. The deadline to submit an application is Friday, October 14th at 5:00 p.m. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for two vacancies on the Transportation Commission, both for unexpired terms ending July 31st, 2025. The deadline to submit an application for the first vacancy is Friday, October 14th at 5:00 p.m., and for the second vacancy is Monday, October 24th at 5:00 p.m. If interested in applying for the planning board in Transportation Commission, apply online at www.burbankca.gov/bccapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. We encourage all Burbank residents to download the R Burbank 311 mobile app. The app improves how residents obtain important city information, report problems, request services, and connect with our local government. Recent updates to the app allow users to report power or electrical concerns, issues with water waste, and report various traffic concerns. You can download the app from the Apple iTunes Store or Google Play Store by searching R Burbank 311. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
We have one council presentation on the agenda this evening. The presentation of a proclamation declaring October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Burbank. I invite members of the Burbank Domestic Violence Task Force to join me at the podium. Hi, everybody. Hi there. We should be some more over here. But anyway. Now, Burbank Domestic Violence Task Force is comprised of committee partners, including the Family Service Agency of Burbank, Zonta Club of Burbank area, Burbank YMCA Social Impact Center, Burbank Unified School District, Home Again Los Angeles, Burbank Boys and Girls Club, Burbank Human Relations Council, and the Los Angeles LGBT Center. Vice Mayor Anthony and Councilmember Springer are the council-appointed liaisons to the Domestic Violence Task Force. So thank you all for participating. Let me read the proclamation, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Springer to start off with reading the proclamation.
Sure. Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence occurs across society regardless of age, gender, race, sexuality, wealth, and geography, and domestic violence is the single largest cause of injury to American women from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and affects other family members as well.
Let me have the vice mayor.
One in four women and one in six men will be victims of domestic violence in their lifetime, with women at greater risk of repeat victimization and serious injury as well. And 89% of those suffering, four or more incidents are women. On average, two women a week are killed by a current or former male partner.
Many outstanding agencies in our community are working towards ending domestic violence and assuring safety and security for our families. I want you to read the last paragraph.
Family Service Agency of Burbank offers many critically important services directly to those affected, including long-term, safe, confidential housing, emergency housing assistance, advocacy, restraining order preparation, and court accompaniment, individual and family counseling, peer support groups, therapeutic monitored visitation, and safe exchange, parent training and support, social service advocacy and coordination, food, clothing, household items, intervention services, and community education, offering survivors the support needed to live safe, healthy, and meaningful lives.
Thank you. Now therefore, I, Jesse Telemontes, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Burbank, and encourage all citizens to learn more about this issue and support programs that offer services to victims of domestic violence. Signed the 4th day of October, 2022, Jesse Telemontes, Mayor. Christine, you would like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, city staff, and the Burbank community were so grateful to be able to provide these vital services in the community of Burbank, and we're just grateful for all the support. Thank you.
Take a picture.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have anything for tonight.
Are you sure?
I am positive.
Okay. Let's see here. Moving on to next presentation. Next is a presentation of a state legislative update by Emmanuel Jones and Associates. Joining us tonight are Kira Ross and David Jones from Emmanuel Jones and Associates. Welcome, Ms. Ross and Mr. Jones. It's great to see you in person once again in this beautiful downtown Burbank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It's great to be here. I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we just, Kira and I just had a delightful morning-afternoon. We had 15 total meetings with your department heads and staff. You have a very, you're very fortunate. You've got a very talented group of department heads and staff working for you, and it was very impressive. And we represent a number of cities, and you are very blessed in the quality of staff you have. Second, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, congratulations to the mayor and Mr. Fudos on your departure from council. The citizens of Burbank have been greatly blessed by your years of service, as have I, in working with you for, I don't want to mention how long, but a long time.
It's been a while.
With that, I'll.
Thank you.
You're most welcome. Well deserved. I'll kick it into the presentation. So the first slide, are we? Second slide. Okay, it's kind of hard to read. It's pretty small up there. But basically, the state has been blessed. This year, we started off with a shocking $97.5 billion surplus, meaning the state anticipated about 200 million-plus revenues, and we ended up with 303. So shocking amount of money to overshoot. So that's the good news. We did do a couple of things. I mentioned there in the slide, we extended COVID coverage for paid sick leave, extended that out to the end of the year, till December 31st, so employees that have sick leave between now and December 31st get two weeks paid. Housing remains, and we're going to have, talk a little bit further about housing in specific, but the state budget continues to recognize housing and homelessness as a big priority. $2.5 billion was part of this budget for housing, infill grants, et cetera, low-income housing, tax credits, and other housing-related funding. Homeless funding specifically had $500 million, which is certainly not enough. Part of the focus was the removal of encampments, so that continues to be, Caltrans and other local agencies are working on figuring out encampment removal. Good news for all of our lower-income residents in the state, $9.5 billion is the state budget went back, is going to go back in rebates. So people making less than $75,000 will get a full $1,000 that will automatically appear from the state of California in their checking account, and it goes up to.
250,000.
250,000. People making 250,000 will get a check coming up in the next two weeks. So that's going to be good news for some of us to get some relief from inflation, gas prices, et cetera. $180 million for local governments to deal with the organics. There's been a piece of legislation that's been on the books, delayed for a long time, but we're going to try to get the organics out of our waste stream, which is a good thing, so we'll end up having less methane gas produced in our landfills. Okay. Specifically, more good news from Sacramento, which sounds oxymoronic, but good news for Burbank is we were successful with your legislative team in giving you some direct funds out of that $9.7 billion. Specifically, Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena will receive $23 million to fund our housing trust fund that's just for those three cities. So that money should arrive sometime this fall. The three cities are going to have to work out exactly the details of the JPA and how you're going to figure out how to allocate that. $2.1 million for transportation, EV, and pedestrian infrastructure for Burbank. $3 million for active transportation, a direct grant for you. And we did achieve funding in reimbursing BWP for the amount of money that was in arrears by customers that couldn't pay their electric bills. So that money will, that funding will wipe those, back pay things from those residential customers for electric utilities. So that's very good news for us all. Just a recap of the session. It was, you've already moved, you're ahead of me there. We had 2019 bills introduced in 2022, which is an astounding amount of those. 1,166 went to the governor. He signed 997 and vetoed 169. So his veto percentage was 14.5%, which is about average, a little higher than Jerry Brown, but about average. And so with that, I think I will turn it over to Kira, and she can give you the substance.
Welcome.
Good evening. Kira Ross with Emmanuel Jones. Wanted to talk a little bit, whoops, there it is, talk a little bit about some of the pieces of legislation that were signed this year that we thought were really important and have really been headliners. The first one, of course, is SB 1177, the bill that Senator Portantino so gratefully and thankfully did the work on to set up, the Joint Housing Trust. We're very excited about what that could, the prospects for that and what that will mean for affordable housing in this region. We really think that this is a pathway forward, and frankly, we think it's a model for the rest of the state to really look at some of the great things we're doing and what can be done. Also wanted to mention SB 6 and AB 2011, and these were big headliner bills in the housing world, because for the first time, this is going to allow residential housing in commercially zoned areas. And so I'm just going to do a quick jump. Whoops, what happened? There it is. These are two really dense bills. There are a lot of details in them. I'm just going to do a little quick 30,000-foot view of these two bills to give you a sense of what this may mean in the communities. Generally, AB 2011 provides a by-rite approval for 100% affordable and mixed-income housing that is exempt from CEQA and must be approved within 90 or 180 days, depending on the size of the projects. The projects under AB 2011 are required to have a 55-year deed restriction for rental units, and they require skilled and trained labor for projects over 50 units. It's skilled and trained, plus there's an additional healthcare coverage requirement for developers. So it's a very high standard to get the by-rite approval for affordable housing. SB 6 does not provide by-rite approval, but also doesn't require 100% affordable housing. It authorizes a project that is at least 50% residential to be an allowable use in an existing commercially zoned area. It also requires skilled and trained labor, but not the enhanced healthcare benefits. And of note, under the new law, is that developers will be able to combine the benefits of both SB 35 and SB 6 on an SB 6 project. So they'd have to qualify under SB 35, and then they could also qualify potentially under SB 6. And it, I don't know if I'm using the right terminology, but potentially sort of stack the two to do a development of existing commercially zoned area. Both of the bills go into effect on July 2nd of next year, so there's a little bit additional delay, and they expire at sunset in 2033. That's a 10-second overview of an extraordinarily complex set of laws. We've been talking to your staff. They are much smarter and know much more of the details in terms of what exactly this will mean, but this is a big step forward from the state. And in many ways, it, at least AB 2011 overrides a lot of the local planning process because it is a streamlined by-rite approval. So what remains to be seen is whether or not developers will use these two pathways to get to commercial, to get to commercial residential housing within a commercial area. There is a provision, I'll just note very quickly, that local governments can opt out individual properties, but there are a number of restrictions that go with that, so.
The city opposed them.
Yes. The city opposed both of the bills.
The state did this to us, not us.
Yes. This is the state's doing.
We didn't like it.
So to go back, let's see. There we go. So a couple of other bills we just wanted to touch on, AB 2097 by Assemblyman Friedman, Assemblyman Friedman, which is a significant new law related to parking minimums. This is another big bill by the state, prohibits cities from imposing or enforcing parking minimums on developments within a half mile of a major transit stop. And of note on this bill, the governor doesn't typically do a signing message. He'll, you know, when he vetoes a bill, he'll do a veto message. On a few bills, he does signing messages. He did one on this bill, and it was very specific that he wants HCD, Housing Community Development, to really watch for unintended consequences on this bill. And the reason for that is that a number of cities have used parking minimums as an enticement to a developer, to say, if you want to go bigger, hey, we could talk about parking. And so they're a little bit nervous at the state level about what are the unintended consequences of a bill like this, and what happens? How is that going to work? And so they want HCD to pay particularly close attention to this one. The other couple bills I think are just worth noting. SB 897 by Senator Wykowski. This is a bill that deals with ADUs. Of note, this bill does raise the height allowances for ADUs, depending on whether or not the ADU is attached or detached. You could go up to 25 feet, or in some cases, it's the lower of whether the local standard versus going higher. So it's another one to know that's out there, that, from the state. And then, then he also did Care Court Bill 1338, I believe, which is the new program for severely impacted homeless people in the community that would have to work with the court system. In LA County, you're in the second round of counties that are going to be implementing this bill, and that wouldn't happen until the end of 2024. So there is some time, there's about six counties that are going to go first, so hopefully we'll learn from implementation on those. And then finally, oh, whoops, there we go. And then finally, AB 452. There was a whole wrath of, a package of gun bills, and one of them was one that we supported, which was AB 452, that requires public and private schools to educate parents about the state's safe gun storage laws. Great bill. We're very excited to see that that was signed and part of the, part of the grouping of gun bills that went forward this year. So vetoed legislation, two very important bills that were vetoed this year. The first one was AB 1685, and this is by Assemblyman Brian, and it would have required cities to forgive at least $1,500 annually in parking ticket and fee relief for homeless. You know, cities are already required to work with people that have parking fines and fees, and we go to great lengths to make sure that we make that affordable and we work with them, even if it's long-term. This bill would have sort of undermined all that and said you have to give at least, at least $1,500 a year to a certified homeless person for any parking fines and fees. The other one is AB 1951 by Mr. Grayson, and this was a big one for local governments, cities, and counties, would have cost us $2 billion over the five years and a half billion dollars a year in revenue loss to cities and counties broadly. And it would have expanded the existing manufacturing, sales, and use tax, and they already have one that expanded that for an additional five years. It would have been a real hit to local government. The governor's veto message, he did note that this would have been a pretty significant revenue hit to local government. So we were glad to see that he's acknowledging the revenue hit and did, in fact, veto this bill. And with that, want to talk about some of the takeaways?
Excuse me there. Yeah, the takeaways from this session, the governor did have a theme in his veto messages that there is a possible economic downturn coming. We're not going to have a $97 billion surplus two years in a row. In fact, cash receipts so far for the first two months of the state fiscal year, which is July and August, are down 8.4% over what they projected. So two months does not make a year as far as revenue goes, but certainly it's not a very happy trend to see that revenues are down by 8.4%. State revenues come in in a very lumpy fashion. There are certain months that are just huge, obviously April when people pay their taxes. Sales tax used to be, you know, January, we'd get the holiday sales tax. We'd know what that is, and that's now pretty much a year-round. But anyway, cautionary note, governor did look at this and say, revenues are down. So he did, included a number of veto messages saying, we can't, we should be prudent, like Jerry Brown, and say, we can't afford any ongoing revenue expenditures. They should be included in the state budget, and going forward, if you want to do some of these programs legislatively, you should come and get into the budget. The reason why the governor likes things in the budget is he controls the budget process. He proposes it in January. The legislature, you know, does their job of putting something on his desk, and then he can sign it and he can blue pencil any amount down to whatever level he wants. So he loves the budget process and wants to shove things more to the budget process. There is also a trend of referenda. So the legislature is, supermajorities in both houses of Democrats, and it will continue to be that way for a long time. Industry and business have figured out they're not going to win on a piece of legislation in the legislature, so this November, we'll see one of the first referendas of a piece of legislation. Something that this council supported was, and the state legislature copied you, is a ban on flavored tobacco products to youth, and that went through, was signed into law, and the industry, the tobacco industry, has got this put on the ballot for November to decide whether we keep that state law or not. So in addition to those, there was legislation passed on unionizing fast-food workers that was signed by the governor. That's being, they're circulating signatures to see if they can get that to the ballot for 2024, and also limitations on oil and gas drilling going forward. Okay, looking forward, obviously, the state of the economy and the budget are going to be tantamount, and that's going to shape a lot of what will happen next year. Clearly, climate resilience and the grid. There's going to be a lot of discussion about transmission and the grid, and the state heavily, actually, they. and the grid. And the state heavily, actually, they told us to go up, go and fire up all our, during the last power crisis, we came this close to going, losing power and having rolling blackouts. The state came to all our public power agencies and really encouraged us, which we did, to provide more power to the grid to keep the state from going into blackout. So I don't know exactly what the figure was, 500 megawatts from LA County region that different agencies, including Burbank, provided to help the state from not going dark. So that was fabulous. The governor continues to, you know, extending Diablo Canyon was not something that he really loved doing, and a lot of people in the environmental community were not very happy with him that way. So he is contemplating ways to get some extraction out of the oil industry. So he has people looking at a wind filled, windfall tax on oil companies. And then lastly, to make everything even more fun in Sacramento, is we'll have 30, at least 30 new members of the legislature out of 120 will be sworn in in December, which is a huge amount of people that are going to be new from different backgrounds. And on top of that, we have a speakership fight. So somebody tried to challenge the speaker, Speaker Rendon, Mr. Rivas from Hollister area, and that fight will resume after we get a brand-new legislature sworn in as to who will be the speaker. So with that, I'd be, anything I missed?
Yeah.
With that, I'd be happy to answer questions, and thank you for the button, Bob. I really appreciate that I can show my Burbank colors.
There you go. We love Burbank. Well, thank you very much for that presentation and update. And there's 30 more people you have to retrain coming on board. You know, one of the bills that the, I mean, not the president, the governor just signed is AB 1801, which declares a new state holiday, April 24. I'm not sure if you, I mean, you're aware of it, but I just want to announce that Assemblymember Adrian Azarian, who's leaving the assembly, established Genocide Remembrance Day as a state holiday, and the governor signed that. So officially, now April 24 is going to be the state holiday for the genocide remembrance. So anyway, any other questions, colleagues, Councilmember Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. And that button makes you look awesome. Going back to the governor's proposal that he was talking about homelessness, meaning, I don't know the terminology, but as I was following it, empowering law enforcement, local cities, that, and it's really hot in this community right now, especially what happened in Studio City, where you had, city was aware, you had homeless people on their property, the husband goes out and tries to, hey, can you move, was willing to bring services, and bottom line is he gets hurt. He's in the hospital. Where is, is it moving forward where local, will give local municipalities the authority that, hey, for the safety of the community and the individual, not arresting, but putting them in, you know, literally off the street, giving them the care, humanely treating him to get him back on his feet? Where are we at with that?
So there's a couple of things going on at the state level. The first, and all dealing with homelessness, on a sort of a range of a spectrum. So the first one was, we talked about a little bit, the Care Court proposal. That impacts severe, people with very severe mental health issues going on, that are so incapacitated, they really cannot care for themselves at all. And so that, we think, you know, the data we've seen, we think it's about 8,000 to 15,000 people statewide. So it's a small portion of all the homeless. And it's really the most severe. And those people will get intensive treatment for two years. They're going to get housing. They're going to be court supervised. So that's one group. In addition to that, there was a package of eight bills by Senator Susan Eggman, who's actually a social worker by trade. And they were looking at addressing homelessness on a number of fronts. At one level, they were looking at extending some of the holds that you can, person comes in, you sort of, you get a little additional time, a couple of days of additional time to kind of monitor them and figure out what's the right place to put them, where can they go. There were bills on, a couple of bills on data and what you're going to do. And then at the other end of the spectrum, there were a couple of bills dealing with conservatorships and trying to change the definition of gravely disabled to try to get people who maybe are on the street, maybe they can get a meal here and there, and they're kind of surviving, but at the same time, they really need a long-term solution, and staying on the street is not the answer. In addition to that, there have been funding for Home Key and Home. You know, the governor's got a couple of different programs that he's really been pushing and funding in the budget that would allow, you know, flipping over hotel rooms into long-term, you know, places. So there's been, you know, they were addressing this on so many different fronts. The challenge is it's not all working. I mean, you're still seeing numbers rise. And so whether or not, you know, Care Courts is trying to get at the most severe cases that are out there. And we couldn't get of the eight bills, we only got four through this year. So there's the four dealing with conservatorship and gravely disabled, those did not go through. So I think we'll see another attempt, because I think that's one answer that although it's the last resort, when you can do nothing else, when you've got someone that's been on the street for three, four, five years, that you are working with daily, and you, you know, the family's been trying to help, there comes a time when you need to look at some of these more drastic options. So there are things going on. It remains to be seen how successful they are, but I think we will continue to see more policy, more budget funding trying to address homeless issues.
And then my follow-up, still dealing with homelessness, is the last time I was up in Sacramento, I participated in a roundtable discussion in dealing with, I believe, and please correct me for the benefit of the public if I got it wrong, Alameda County Fire Services was working kind of a unique model to see if it worked throughout the state, where paramedics would be responsible to follow up with the homelessness within their district. So when they got discharged from a hospital, and they would say, hey, this person needs this medication, that the firefighters within that district, or then specifically the paramedics, would do a welfare check, to go to that homeless camp, make sure that they got their meds. If not, they were able to follow up on them. Is that moving any forward or to die? Any update on that?
I'm not real familiar with Alameda, a particular program.
Because it's a northern county, and I'm just guessing that it might have been Alameda, but I'm not.
Certainly could have been. I mean, they certainly have the issue. Happy to get more information.
Okay.
Just not familiar with that particular program and what success they've had. I will say I haven't seen it in a bill or in a budget, you know, in the budget, but that's not to say, you know, we'll follow up and see what's out there. I certainly think you're going to, we'll continue to see proposals and based on local models and what's worked in different places. And homelessness is one of those extraordinarily difficult issues to try to work through, because every person is slightly different. They're all going to have different cases. And so the funding that's out there, you know, some people we can get into a shelter, some we can't, some we can get into certain, you know, services and other things. It's a really tough nut to crack.
And then my final question, and this is it.
Yeah.
Electric vehicle rebates. Is there anything within the state budget to encourage motorists to get rid of their fossil fuel burning vehicles via the rebates between the federal government and hopefully the state government? Is there any conversation from the budget to encourage people, hey, we'll give you a rebate of X number of dollars to?
They certainly have in the past.
Isn't the goal 2035?
2035 is when the state will stop selling, yeah. And in between now and then, there's fleets, you know, the fleets were going to have to turn over and a couple of other things. There certainly has been funding in the past, especially for low income, to help offset the cost of an electric vehicle. I haven't seen new funding this year. There has been, there's a lot of funding that's come down from the federal government in terms of EV charging stations, and specifically public infrastructure that they're working through. But I haven't seen direct funding for EV, you know, electric vehicles and funding for individuals to offset the cost. That said, as we get closer to 2035, we probably will see that, because there is going to be a certain percentage of the population that's going to need help in getting these cars.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for that presentation. Just picking up where we left off, you mentioned initiatives. I know in 2020, Uber put Prop 22 on the ballot, and they were successful with that. Didn't Lyft this year put something on the ballot specifically about electric vehicles?
Yeah, so Prop 30 would, it's a tax on the wealthy, and that funding would go to offset, you know, for different programs at the state airboard. One of the requirements coming forward is by, I think I'm going to get it wrong, but 2030, I believe, that fleet vehicles of companies like Uber and Lyft have to upgrade their fleets to be clean, to be green or clean or, you know, EVs. So Lyft is one of the major backers of Prop 30. They're not the only one. There are a whole host of backers on that proposition. And there is some reason to believe, if you're listening to the governor, because the governor's argument is that Lyft could use the public funds to offer, to cover the cost of their upgrade to their fleets.
Right, right.
So, yeah, so this is an ongoing, it's an ongoing battle between the governor and Lyft in the media. Prop 30, we'll see how it goes. I mean, it's always interesting when a governor opposes something that you would naturally think he wouldn't. So we'll see. I mean, they're not the only beneficiary, but they are certainly one potentially of the beneficiaries. And it's.
Well, I'm always wary when a large corporation dumps so much of money to put something on the ballot, like, you know.
Makes you think.
It always gives me pause. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, and this is mostly for the people watching at home, the Care Court, the 1338, you know, I sit, I chair a large statewide disability rights organization, and every disability rights organization in the state opposed this bill. Because, like you said, you know, homelessness is multifaceted, and this one-size-fits-all approach is, you know, highly problematic. Have you heard of any lawsuits? The rumors are ACLU is going to get in an injunction and try to stall this like they did SB 1045. Do you hear anything about that?
I haven't heard of any as of yet. It's early. The first, just so that you know, the timing on that, the first six counties to go are fall of 2023 for implementation, and then the rest of the state is not until December 2024. So.
So we've got at least a year.
Right. And so there's time, you know, and they're going to, they did some funding, but it's not enough. So there's going to have to be another round of funding so that we can get this, get the implementation of this program up and running. And trying to get it in the courts is going to be a whole nother.
Yeah. Because like you were saying, there was a bunch of bills, and all the people I know who are working on this, they blocked a bunch of them, but this was like the governor's flagship, and he was able to get it through.
This was the big one. Yeah, and this was the really big one, and this was a very, very high priority for the governor this year. So it wasn't too surprising that it got to the governor.
Right. If he asks for it, it usually comes back to him. I will say, he did sign Assembly Bill 1663, which is another conservatorship bill, but that deals with probate conservatorship. And that is an extension of what came out of the Free Britney movement over the last couple of years, fixing a lot of the problems with conservatorship. So I am thankful he signed that. Thank you for coming today.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I won't cover any of the ground that my colleagues did. I just wanted to ask you about one topic. That would be Senate Bill 6 and Assembly Bill 2011 related to new housing in commercially zoned areas. If I caught it correctly in your presentation, you were mentioning that the legislation does include certain criteria to opt out specific properties. I was wondering if you could dive a little bit into more detail about what that criteria is, and is there a limit for municipalities like Burbank on the number of properties that we can opt out?
Yeah, so I can't get too far into the detail right now, but cities can opt out in the process. So when a developer brings the project to the city, the city can, on an individual parcel, opt that parcel out. In order to do that, they're going to have to offer up a comparable property that the developer could develop, same density, similar sort of characteristics. And it has to be done on an individual basis. So you couldn't do a stretch of a street. You couldn't do multiple buildings. It's an individual parcel that they could opt out on. So, and it has restrictions. And so there are some additional restrictions that I won't get into right now, but get into things like density, and you can't change the density of the area and that kind of thing. But it is, it's a pretty narrow provision, and it's, the key is that it's an individual parcel.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. So I just have a follow-up question on that. So opting out, is that something we do a plan? It's part of our general plan? That these parcels we have opted out, do you know yet? Or is it?
Quickly reading it. I mean, you know, I would say that's something I'd want your city attorney to really take a deep dive in. So let me preface it with that. Lucky job.
Remember, you're on video.
Yeah, right. But as I understand the process, it would be when, during the process, as the developer brings the project to the city, that's where they could opt out. It's not, you don't do it as an ordinance that would cover a whole bunch of different properties. It would be on an individual basis as the project comes forward.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you once again.
Thank you.
It's been great working with you all these years.
Yes, we'll miss you.
The trips up to Sacramento, and obviously, when you come down here, you've been great partners for our city, and just continue doing the best that you can for our city. I appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDougal, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, and for the benefit of the public, the city council met in closed session this evening to discuss four matters. City council met with a labor negotiator, Ms. Betsy McClinton, our management services director, to discuss negotiations concerning Burbank Management Association and Burbank City Employees Association. Council took no reportable action. City council also met to discuss a number of matters of existing litigation. In the case of Yimby Law versus City of Burbank, city council took no reportable action regarding the housing and community development notice of violation with the Pickwick denial. City council took no reportable action. With regard to Pickwick Investments LLC versus City of Burbank, the city council unanimously approved a settlement agreement this evening, which is a reportable action. It's rare that the council receives a signed written settlement agreement. It did so this evening. In this matter, the city successfully brokered a settlement agreement with the developer, Pickwick Investments LLC, and parties known as the Intervener, the Friends of the Rancho for Equestrian Safety. The agreement calls for an amended project consisting of 92 units, which incorporates an equestrian trail and other pedestrian and equestrian safety measures. It preserves the existing width of Main Street and provides other measures to mitigate construction impacts to nearby residents, such as installation of sound blankets on chain link fencing during construction. These project improvements will be described in the developer's amended application, which has not yet been submitted, and it will be scheduled for consideration by the city council during a notice public hearing on Tuesday, October 25, 2022, later this month. And the city appreciates and recognizes the efforts of the developer and Friends of the Rancho Equestrian Safety in reaching this settlement. The residents that make up the Friends of the Rancho were at the heart of the negotiations and were indispensable in reaching agreement and resolution of this matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. I too, I want to weigh in. I just want to thank all the parties concerned for working so diligently to come to this conclusion tonight. I believe it's a win-win for all parties involved. Thank you, sir. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask if the people at home wanted to view this settlement agreement, is that available for public?
Yes, the settlement agreement is a public record, and it should be available tomorrow morning. And we'll probably make it available both on the website and for someone to come in and request a copy.
Great, thank you. Now is the time for general public comment. For members of the public who are here in person and wish to speak, please present a completed yellow general public comment card to the city clerk. Any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business except a public hearing. If you speak to the public hearing item, your comments will not be included in the public hearing record. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum allotted time of three minutes. A timer is available on the podium to help the speaker keep track of how much time is left. Please state your name for the record. For those wishing to call in during the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Madam City Clerk, I believe we've got several cards here already?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Mr. Smith, followed by Francesca Ficetti. Welcome, Mr. Smith.
Hey. You know, I'm glad about this Pickwick settlement deal. You know, I've been talking to you about Gerard and Peterson, and every day I learn something new on this. I have the contract here, and it bears the signature of Ms. Alver and Mr. Hess, Ms. Wilkie over there. They all thought there was nothing wrong with this contract. The city The city, we get nothing out of it. And I learned tonight from the chief that we, in fact, paid Gerard and Peterson $6,000 a year. Can you imagine that? Yesterday, I went over there and counted the cars in the parking lot, I counted in the storage. I didn't, I can't see what's inside, obviously, but in the lot, there was over 60 cars. And at $66 a day, it's, you know, over a million, it's about $1,000,005 a year, over $100,000 a month in just storage fees. Now, if any of us, any of us citizens here in Burbank get our car towed, we're gonna pay $300 to get it back, okay? So this contract is a windfall if you do the math and extend it out over the years. It's, you know, they've been the exclusive tow company for 50 years. It's like, you know, $70 million or more. Did you ever wonder why they're driving all those brand-new tow trucks? We're getting robbed. The city is getting nothing. Now, I'm asking you all as politely, as respectfully as I can, agendize this, do a deep dive into it. Understand more about this contract and ask questions. It's not enough to get a staff report. You have to be experts. Just as the vice mayor cares about taxing the rich, he mentioned it tonight, he should also care about protecting our citizens. This is wrong, and it begs the question, how many other contracts are no bid in the city of Burbank? You know, I want answers that the chief, the chief was saying, how can it be that you're so interested in this? That was the focus. You know, the meat and potatoes wasn't a no-bid contract, it was, why am I interested in this? I'm interested in it because it's wrong. It's not kosher. It's rancid. And when you look at it, you learn little things like this. One of these guys, Gerard and Peterson, it's two men, I guess, one of them was a Burbank police officer, and when he got done, his son was a Burbank police officer. And that's how the fix got in. That's how this started, with this exclusive no-bid contract. Now, I talked to rollets, I talked to gay towing in Glendale. These folks are interested, they're salivating to bid, and they'll pay money. We'll get something out of it. So something's amiss. How can you accept it? You know? Obviously, the city manager signed off on it. You heard the chief say, how am I doing, chief? Better, okay. You heard the chief say, you know, it was kind of a, you scratch my back and I'll scratch yours. The chief says, well, we get something out of it. They tow our cars for free when our city vehicles break down. When I asked the question, well, how many toes did we receive? He couldn't answer. And this cozy, scratch my back, I'll scratch yours is not the way a city does business. Don't you folks recognize that? Why am I the only one who cares about this? You know? So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, Francesca Ficetti, followed by Sarkos Simonian.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I came this evening to get an update on the parking lot expansion at 4301 Riverside Drive. Patrick approached me earlier tonight, gave me a brief update, but maybe if he can speak later to let also the rest of the community also know what the status is, since there's other buildings also that are but next to us. Second, I wanted to thank you guys. Thank you guys for listening to the concerns of the community having this open forum. And also, I wanted to thank the council for the proclamation declaring Hispanic Heritage Month in Burbank. Quería agradecerle por reconocer la comunidad de nuestra ciudad de Burbank. So muchas gracias. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, Sarkos Simonian, followed by Andronic.
George.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and the city staff, actually. We have a great city staff here in Burbank. And I just want to thank you, actually, for taking up this agenda item, which is Agenda Item 6, for issuing, recommendation for issuing a letter to President Biden and the US Congress about the waiver of Section 907 that the president has, actually. That Section 907 was designed by Congress to stop any military aid from US tax dollars, actually, to the country of Azerbaijan, which, a few weeks ago, actually, they attacked not only Artsakh, but Armenia itself, and they took positions in Armenia. And they committed war crimes, actually. If you see videos on YouTube, you can see how they are executing prisoners of war, actually. And it's very graphic video, and we can't display it sadly, but it's happening with our tax dollars. And why this is, it's important to Burbank? Because your residents, actually, they have relatives, they have friends and family members in these countries, actually. So if you think about it, your tax dollars, it's going to Azerbaijan, that's hurting your residents in Burbank. So issuing this letter, actually, it's a service to your community, not just, just the army and community, because if this happens with Azerbaijan, it's gonna happen with other communities, too. So I support that resolution, and I support actually asking the city manager to write the letter and directly to the president, and asking them for the waiver, to suspend the waiver of Section 907. So thank you very much, and if you guys need any help, ANCA is always ready to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andric, followed by Juan Guillen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I stand here in support of the Burbank city's effort to condemn the Azerbaijani attack on Armenia on September 13th, and the war crimes that they have committed during that war and activities. Their cruelty has no limit. They have killed POWs, tortured them, plucking their flesh, and to top it off, they're making videos of it. And in one case, they send the video, using the victim's telephone, they send the video to her family. Imagine the cruelty of it. We cannot stand for this. We cannot remain silent. We have to do something. The Freedom Support Act of 1992 prevents any military aid going to Azerbaijan, except when Section 907 is waived by the president. And that has happened too many times. $164 million have gone to Azerbaijan. And every time they get some aid, they turn around and attack Armenia and Artsakh. The president of Azerbaijan has expressly said it. He wants to finish off Armenians. He wants to finish the genocide. He wants to erase Armenia and Armenians from this planet. This is their goal. The guy is saying it out loud, in public. So what we're asking is to stop any military aid going to Azerbaijan immediately, to take away the president's authority of waiving Section 907, and support House Resolution 1351 that condemns the aggression and stops any military aid to Azerbaijan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Juan Guillen, followed by Andre. Welcome.
Good evening. Someone asked me once, what's the most important part of a city council meeting? I said, public comment. Why public comment? Because you get to hear what the residents' concerns are from different parts of the neighborhood. And to see this council, over the past years and recent months, play with public comment and free speech is an embarrassment and an insult to those that sacrifice so much to ensure that we have those freedoms.
That's right.
One of the council members, excuse me, the mayor said, in some cities, they only have one minute, comparing us to the city of Los Angeles, who is 4 million people. How can you compare the city of Burbank to 4 million, or a city of 4 million people? Are we not supposed to be better? Is that what we want to compare ourselves to, a city of that size? Do we compare our police department, our fire department to that, or our educational system to the city of Los Angeles, say, whoa, we're better? We should be better. We should be the example. Beverly Hills opened a public comment before us. City of Downey opened a public comment before us. Why? Presentations are done to reduce public comment or to eliminate by phone, because it's expensive. So we have money for rocking hula, but we don't have money for public comment and free It boggles my mind. It was sold as, oh, we're gonna eliminate final orals and reduce it to three minutes, and we're gonna add more time, and there'll be more opportunity to speak. And no one asks the question, why were final orals so important? And I get it, Mr. Schultz is shaking his head, and I'm sure he heard it from the residents, because I saw the meeting, the marathon meeting last week. It's important because it's a, it's a catch 22. I remember Mr. Applebaum was in here shortly after we removed final orals, and he came down because he wanted to say something, like, oh, sorry, we don't have final orals anymore. If you guys step in it and someone catches it, or like Mr. Schultz said, if there's a point of view that you don't see, final orals are important, because it doesn't have to come back at a one-step three months from now, when people have already forgotten what the topic of conversation was. It can be addressed at that meeting, reopened back up in the same meeting. Do not play with public comment. It is an insult to the residents and all those that sacrifice so much for us to have that freedom.
Thank you. Andre? Do you know Isian?
Dionysian.
There you go, I'm getting closer.
Good evening, city council. Last week, I came before you to announce a debate between all the candidates running for city council. And since then, my team has been tirelessly working to complete and to perfect our design for what we hope is the most fair structure and topic set for this event. But recently, I've been approached by a few community members with reservations about our debate. While not many of these few reservations come from great leaders who rightly command my respect, there's a concern that to have such a debate is to invite disrespect. They worry that to counter an ideological opponent would be to title them an enemy. I understand this fear. I mean, who amongst us wouldn't? It's a reasonable conclusion, especially after seeing what so-called debates look like on a national scale. But that failure of our national body politic should not reflect upon the grand American tradition of civil discourse. Council, I stand before you and before the community in hopes of assuaging these fears. It's been pointed out to me that many of you, and as many of you might have observed, that this year's candidates are substantially more cordial, respectful, and friendly than in years past. This is a fantastic improvement, but yet there is fear that if one were to state an ideological disagreement with another, this would damage this rare standing. On the contrary, I firmly believe that if these candidates step onto that stage together in the spirit of respectful debate, that they shall step off the stage at the end of that evening, having strengthened those bonds. It is, in fact, because of the existing respect that this year we will finally have a shot to present a truly respectful and policy-driven debate. And in doing so, we will have demonstrated to our city, to our country, and to the world that civil discourse is alive and well in America, that our national political system does not reflect the America we all know and love, that it does not reflect the good, honest people who run for public office all across this country. To the candidates and to the community, I ask that you take this leap of faith, that you take this leap of faith with us. Place your trust in each other. Place your trust in the people. Trust that the promise of America, one of pluralism, one of fierce disagreements, and yet steadfast unity, is still alive and living with each and every one of us. Council, I beg of you to vocally support this endeavor, left, right, and center. We all benefit from a country that believes in itself again. Let us start the fight to restore that belief on October 23rd at 7:00 PM at the Colony Theater. For more information, follow all of our socials at Civic Duty Media. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other cards?
We don't have any cards, and we do not have anyone waiting for, to be put through on the call.
Okay, so we have completed in-person public comment, so we don't have any callers? No, okay.
We don't.
There being no public, further public comment, I now declare the General Public Comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from city council, city manager, and our city attorney. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to everyone for your comment tonight. I'll be brief. Mr. Guillen, I believe you left, but I agree with you, sir, and I'll continue to push for the return of final orals. Mr. City Manager, with regards to Mr. Schlossman's point, I'd like to take a look at that contract. Would it be possible to have that included as part of our take-home report on Friday?
Yes, we can, no problem.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, with regards to Ms. Ficetti's request, if Mr. Prescott's available, could we get a brief public update on the parking lot expansion?
We could do a brief update. That's the pleasure of the mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes, members of the city council. Planning staff has worked diligently to come up with a revised plan for the parking lot at Riverside and Rose, and they've indicated to the property owner what that plan should look like, and we're just waiting for it to be resubmitted. When we have that plan submitted, we'll let the residents know. The plan will not involve the removal of the wall adjacent.
So, okay, any colleagues, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming down. Just a follow-up on the, the contract for the towing. Does the city council have direct oversight on those kinds of contracts, or does that come through the budgetary process?
The city council approves the budget. Departments have authority to spend money in the budget. The purchasing code sets forth different thresholds for competitive bidding. In some circumstances, if a contract is either enumerated in the budget or below a certain dollar threshold, competitive bidding doesn't have to be done. But the original contract was approved by council and has been before council twice, with the 10-year term in it and with the options to renew. Those are available on Granicus. If you search Gerard and Peterson on the city's webpage, I actually pulled those up at the last meeting while we were talking. The annual, the first contract had no dollar value in it at all. The Burbank was just selecting Gerard and Peterson, the 2008 agreement, and the more recent extension actually had the $6,000. Dollar value is $1,000 per year, per space, that they must reserve for Burbank towed vehicles. In other words, we're buying capacity in their yard that they can hold the vehicles that they tow that are in violation of local law or whatever.
Okay, and just as a follow-up, can we find out how many vehicles we tow on average, like either monthly or yearly, just when we get that report with the contract back to us?
I don't know who has that information, but
Yeah, we'll get you everything we have from PD. All right, thank you. And then, Mr. Guillen, I would say there might be something coming next year to discuss what you are talking about, so look for that. And then, lastly, to Mr. Dionysian, I agree with you that a debate, the free exchange of ideas, it can be done in a respectful manner, you know, not personal attacks of any nature, ad hominem attacks or anything like that. But I mean, where would we be as a country without, you know, the Lincoln Douglas debates, the Kennedy-Nixon debates, right? And those are, those are the things that we, we need to see. We need to see folks stand for what they believe in and back it up, back it up with solid arguments, so, anyway. Thank you for coming down tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you, everybody, for coming down for General Public Comment.
Councilmember Frudos?
I don't want to belate, but thank you very much for everybody coming down, and thank you for your thoughts on what you're doing with this election. Thank you.
I too want to thank everybody for coming down and sharing your thoughts with us, sharing your concerns, sharing, obviously, things you agree with us and things you don't agree with. It's always good to hear that. Ms. Ficetti, thank you for acknowledging Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you very much. So once again, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming down. Remember, we're here every, just about every Tuesday. Come on down, 6 o'clock. Join us. So we're moving on to the consent calendar. Maybe it acted on one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar, item number one, adoption of a resolution approving a second amendment to the existing operating agreement with clean energy, a California corporation related to the compressed natural gas station at 810 North Lake Street. Item two, adoption of a resolution approving a first amendment to existing lease with clean energy, a California corporation related to time fail compressed natural gas station at Public Works Yard at 124 South Lake Street. And that concludes the two items.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
And second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the time and place for the hearing for project number 22-0005215 concerning consideration and adoption of an interim urgency ordinance establishing a moratorium on new and replacement restaurants with drive-throughs and the conversion of businesses with drive-throughs into drive-through restaurants citywide, which requires a four-fifth vote for approval. Before we begin, are there any disclosures relating to this hearing? Colleagues? Nope, seeing none? Madam City Clerk, have the notice as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Do we have, do we have this, the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
Yes, you do.
Has the city received any written communications on this matter, and have they been provided to all City Council members?
Yes, you did receive one correspondence, and all of the council have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes. Thank you. Vice Mayor Anthony, members of the City Council. My name is Joseph Anibuchi, Associate Planner with the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. May I have the presentation, please? For your consideration tonight is an interim urgency ordinance establishing a moratorium on new and replacement restaurants with drive-throughs and the conversion of businesses with drive-throughs into drive-through restaurants citywide. The proposed interim urgency ordinance would prohibit the processing of any application for new and replacement restaurants with drive-throughs, the conversion of existing businesses to drive-through restaurants, and prohibit any expansion of hours of drive-through operations citywide for a period of 45 days. This ordinance also prohibits expansion of business operations for residentially adjacent restaurants with drive-throughs past 10:00 PM during the moratorium period. And during this 45-day period, staff will review the city's existing drive-through standards, review development standards of other jurisdictions that have dealt with similar issues, and report back to City Council on possible next steps that may include a Zonetex amendment. A shift in consumer behavior has recently become more apparent in an increase in restaurants with smaller building footprints, which offer limited or, in some cases, no onsite dining. However, these new restaurant prototypes have longer vehicle queuing lanes for which the city's current development standards have not been updated to address. The result is that during high-demand periods, customer vehicle traffic can spill over into busy thoroughfares and can negatively affect the surrounding residential neighborhoods and businesses who subsequently face increased vehicular traffic, blocked driveways, litter, and unruly or disrespectful patrons. The urgency interim ordinance would allow staff time to thoroughly research potential solutions that would continue to facilitate responsible development while protecting and preserving existing neighborhoods. This map shows all the known drive-through sites in the city of Burbank. The red dots highlight the drive-throughs that are residentially adjacent, while the green highlights those that are not. As can be seen on the map, there are a significant number of drive-throughs that are concentrated along San Fernando Boulevard. There are also a large number of drive-through sites located within Magnolia Boulevard's commercial corridor. Furthermore, it is important to note that these sites are residentially adjacent. Of the 41 sites shown on this map, staff identified 12 sites that could be potential conversion sites, and those sites are marked by a star in either red or green. Pursuant to 10-1502, most new or replacement restaurants with drive-throughs in the city of Burbank are permitted with a conditional use permit only and are restricted to certain zones. Burbank Municipal Code 10-1-1608 and 10-1-1609 contain separate standards for the approval of restaurants with drive-throughs. These standards currently require an onsite vehicular queuing lane that is 160 feet at minimum, as measured from the point of entry to the furthest service window. This would mean that the stacking space must accommodate at least 10 cars on average. Further, Part D of 10-1-1609 allows the modification of any business with an existing drive-through into a drive-through without a CUP, once the modification has been evaluated by a building official. BMC Sections 10-1-1150 and 10-1-1154 specifically contain requirements for residentially adjacent commercial and industrial properties to ensure that these residential communities are not negatively affected by traffic generation, parking, light, noise, litter, or the cumulative impact of these demands. Now, staff has started to review the development standards for drive-through restaurants of nearby and comparable cities of Glendale, Pasadena, Long Beach, and Santa Clarita to determine how drive-throughs are permitted and what development standards apply to the use. Staff has compiled the table, which you see in front of you here, which indicates preliminary research that we have conducted to this point. Based on this initial research, staff is looking into development standards that address the design of the drive-through facility, including queuing length, lane width, and/or the minimum number of vehicles. At this time, I would like to bring the council's attention to the supplemental memo that was provided to council on October 3rd, which addresses changes to this ordinance. For the record, I will read the specific language that was changed. Page one of City Attorney's Synopsis, staff added the following. "This ordinance also prohibits expansion of business operations for residentially adjacent restaurants with drive-throughs past 10:00 PM during the moratorium period." On page three of Paragraph Two of Attachment One, this now reads, "No permits may be approved for new and replacement restaurants with drive-throughs, as well as the conversion of existing businesses with drive-throughs to a restaurant with drive-throughs citywide." Page four of New Paragraph Three of Attachment One now reads, "Existing legally established residentially adjacent restaurants with drive-throughs shall not expand business operations between the hours of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM residentially adjacent as defined by BMC Section 10-1-203." And finally, page four of New Paragraph Five of Attachment One now reads, "Any restaurants with a drive-through with a conditional use permit previously approved by the city and not residentially adjacent as defined by BMC Section 10-1-203 prior to the effective date of this ordinance are exempt from this ordinance." In light of the entire record presented to you tonight, staff recommends the City Council adopt the proposed interim urgency ordinance establishing a moratorium on new and replacement restaurants with drive-throughs and the conversion of businesses with drive-throughs into drive-through restaurants citywide. This adoption, the adoption of this ordinance requires a four-fifth vote by the City Council. City Charter Section 500 authorizes the City Council to adopt an urgency ordinance as an emergency measure to preserve the public health, safety, and general welfare. The adoption of this interim urgency ordinance would allow staff time to thoroughly research and develop a comprehensive set of regulations that recognize and balance the various interests related to restaurants with drive-throughs in a manner that accounts for the city's needs as well as the community's vision. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon public hearing card to the city clerk if you wish to speak. Please state your name for the record. For those wishing to call in during the public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until, until all in-person comments have been received. Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't have cards, and we don't have anyone waiting on a call either, so it's safe to go ahead and close it.
Okay, so we've completed in-person public comment, and there is no, no one waiting to speak. So we're moving on. There will be no further public comment. I now declare the public comment period closed. Will the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments or any response to the public?
No response to the public, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of staff? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. I only have one question. Theoretically speaking, if this ordinance, as it's written, was in place before Raising Canes had submitted their permitting and their plans, how would that have changed their by right construction?
The moratorium would have prevented them from opening.
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Colleagues, anyone else? Questions? Councilmember Schultz?
A comment, actually, if that's appropriate, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for the report. I found that Attachment Four was particularly helpful, and just from one council member's perspective, when we looked at all of the cities that you did preliminary research on, at first blush, it seems like Long Beach has a very good system set in place. There are requirements for drive-throughs that are within 150 feet of residential areas, requirements related to hours of operation, and it looks like they're already in the process of updating that ordinance again to perhaps make it tougher. So personally, I'd love to see a deeper dive on the parameters that they've put in place and see if that's a structure that might work well in Burbank. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only question for staff would be, in the ordinance, I didn't see it anywhere, but educate me if I missed it. The speaker, the, you know, when people order, the noise that it emits, is there anything in the future, or what's going to protect it during this urgency ordinance? Because that comes up a lot.
So this ordinance doesn't address existing operations of existing drive-throughs, except preventing them from expanding their hours. In other words, any operating drive-through is allowed to continue operating. So it doesn't address their speakers, it doesn't address their lighting, it goes directly to the issue that this community has been concerned with, preventing the conversion of drive-throughs or the replacement of businesses. And you have a supplemental packet because, in our mind, staff was also concerned about changes in operating hours during the study period, and we had realized we hadn't addressed specific language. So we gave you this late supplemental package to make sure that the ordinance you adopt addressed both expansion of a use or conversion of a use, but also expansion of hours, business hours, business operations. And in particular, the term "business operations" is intended, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking for staff. We use the phrase "business operations" because we didn't want a business to be able to shut down the drive-through and push all the deliveries to late hours. So staff took a pretty comprehensive look at this, but I'll, I'll yield to them.
And then my, my final question to staff, it kind of follows the vice mayor in a sense. So if an existing business today, moving forward with this in place, if they did have an existing drive-through that hadn't been used for 20-plus years, and it was like a teller-type bank situation, would this protect the city for saying, hey, that used to be a bank-type drive-through, it wasn't designed to be a restaurant, so you're going to have to modify it? Would this protect the city through this ordinance, should somebody be in the process of buying that type of situation?
Well, this, this does address the conversion of businesses into businesses with drive-throughs. So we have accommodated that with this ordinance, but again, in the future, we will be looking at how we can address the negative impacts for businesses with restaurants, or sorry, restaurants with drive-throughs, and, you can go ahead if you...
So in other words, this urgency ordinance would basically prevent a different type of business, say CVS as an example. They've got a smaller window, and you get your meds, and that's it. If somebody were to buy a CVS building and they wanted to put Wazoo chicken wings, and they needed to redo that window to a bigger window to accommodate the vehicle drive-through for the restaurant, this would protect for that type of development from happening?
Exactly.
Great. Thank you very much.
Wazoo chicken wings, huh?
Hey, I'm leaving council, I'm going to open up a Wazoo chicken place with a drive-through in another city.
There you go. Councilmember Springer?
Great. Thank you very much for your report, and thank you for acknowledging that the way people dine has changed. And in, during the moratorium, if we should pass it, does it also look at, because there's very little dining space and the impact on the neighborhood in terms of people dining in the neighborhood? Because there, there's not enough dining room space for them to go through the drive-through and park and eat on-site? So would you please look at the impact on the neighborhood for people dining in the neighborhood? Thank you.
We will. Thank you.
Okay, and also, so just to clarify, this would prohibit, there's a moratorium, Raising Canes cannot extend their hour beyond 10:00 PM?
They would not be able to extend their hours now, not beyond 10:00 PM. For the hours of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, you can't extend your hours.
Great, thank you. That's all my questions.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, I now declare the public hearing closed, and the council will now deliberate. What is the council's pleasure? Is there a discussion or a motion? Councilmember Frutos?
If there's no discussion, I'll introduce the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You didn't put the, in the notes right here, so let me go to this one here. Thank you. Adopt an interim urgency ordinance of the council of the city of Burbank establishing a moratorium on new and replacement restaurants with drive-throughs and the conversion of businesses with drive-throughs into drive-through restaurants citywide.
I'll second.
There's a motion and second. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor?
This is an emergency ordinance, so we need four-fifths vote, and it goes into effect immediately. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. It's always good to know. Okay, no other questions? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see here. We have three reports to council this evening. After staff's presentation, the City Council will proceed with in-person public comment only for each item. Please fill out a yellow public comment card and hand it to the city clerk. Speakers will now have three minutes to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation, as long as the speaker has not spoken on the item during the first period of public comment. The first report is the adoption of a resolution adopting a revised speed hump policy. Mr. Ken Berkman, Public Works Director, please present the report. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. Traffic Engineering Manager Edward Yu is here with me to present the PowerPoint. Happy to provide a quick little overview of what is really an expansion of our speed hump policy that will allow more streets to be eligible for the program. Also want to let you know that the policy was brought before the Infrastructure Oversight Board back in March, and we revised it based on their input. We brought it back to them in May, and they recommended bringing it before you for your approval. So with that, I'll call upon Mr. Yu.
Welcome, Mr. Yu.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berkman, for the great introduction there. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members. It's my pleasure to be here today to present you the revised speed hump policy. Staff worked hard on this to make sure that we get everything correct for the city of Burbank and its residents. Can I have the presentation, please? Thank you. So the, I wanted, the first slide I wanted to provide you was the background of the speed hump criteria and policy. The initial speed hump installation criteria policy was adopted by City Council on July 16th, 1996, and revised October 13th, 1998. So it's been a long time coming that we need to take a fresh look at this, and revise it to meet the appropriate standards for the citizens of Burbank. On May 26th, 2022, as Director Berkman stated, the Infrastructure Oversight Board recommended that staff present the revised speed hump policy to the City Council for approval. So here we are today. To date, I just want to let you know, so the staff has been working hard to put as many speed humps in the city of Burbank that are appropriate. To date, we have over 280 speed humps have been installed and within the city. So that's a lot of speed humps for a city of this size. Public Works can install, and we do, all the speed humps are installed by Public Works staff. We can install approximately 15 to 20 speed humps per year, and a street segment may take two or three speed humps, so depending on the length of the segment. Currently, what we're looking for is, speed humps are an effective traffic calming device designed to help reduce vehicular speeding on low-volume and low-speed roads. The city of Burbank will be, with this revised speed hump ordinance, utilizing three different types of speed humps. A regular standard speed hump, a speed cushion, which is a pilot program on Bell Air... A regular standard speed hump, a speed cushion, which is a pilot program on Bel Air, and the new one that we're deploying are speed tables. Right here, we have an example of the different types of speed humps. On the upper left, we have a standard speed hump located in Ontario, about 12 feet high, three inches tall. And then on the right, we have what we call the speed cushion. And the speed cushion is designed, or some people have different names for it, but the speed cushion is designed for emergency vehicles, and it's on emergency routes. So if you'll notice that in the middle of the speed hump, there are slots so that the fire department can go through there safely and not be impacted too much for emergency response, which is very important. And the final one...
Quick, let me ask you a question. Did you say 12 feet high?
No, 12 feet wide and three inches tall. Oh, that will really slow them down, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So speed table is the latest addition to the, I'm calling the speed hump family here, is basically 24 feet wide and three inches tall. So it's designed to have, for a higher-volume roadways and for, and a lot of the requests we've gotten from the city's citizens are steeper grade streets. So...
So it's not designed to send you in the air?
No, no. The staff is, you know, one of the challenges that we've had with the speed hump criteria is looking at all the different criteria involved in making sure that the speed humps are placed appropriately. Here, we list about 12, 11 different criteria here. Street classification, street width, the number of lanes, minimum speed, traffic volume, street grades, street length, horizontal alignment and visibility, truck or transit routes, emergency routes, street condition, and petition. A lot of these were in the previous criteria, but weren't expanded and weren't explained appropriately. So now, what we've done in the new package is kind of give a better definition so the residents can understand why are we looking at this criteria and what we're looking for in this, to make sure that it's appropriate. To get where we are today, one of the things that we did is look at the other surrounding cities. We looked at the City of Glendale, City of Los Angeles, County of Los Angeles, City of Pasadena, and the City of Santa Clarita. And then what we call the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is a national publication of traffic engineers. So we looked at all the criteria and the evaluations they use to determine when a speed hump is appropriate. And this is very important for us because we wanted to see what our neighboring cities were deploying, when it was good or bad, or where we needed to make changes. So in your package, you'll find that there's a table that does a comparison, and it's a very, staff spent a lot of time looking at each criteria and making sure we got, we had the right fit for the City of Burbank. Now, one of the things, if this, these next couple of slides, we'll go over the speed hump criteria and eligibility comparison. And what this is, is that it's the differences that we made from the previous criteria to the revised speed hump policy. And a lot of these criteria and a lot of these revisions came about because we were listening to the residents, we were listening to what other, the council members and other people have told us that we need to address this, we need to, another way of accessing more speed humps or a way of traffic calming device. One of the, the first thing we looked at was a street classification, and we wanted to make clarity on this. We wanted to make sure that there was confusion that we were, that if alleys are eligible, we cannot make alleys eligible due to the street, because it's a concrete street, and also there's a drainage in the middle of the street, so it wouldn't make it appropriate. One of the things that we had before is that we weren't allowing concrete streets. This time around, we decided concrete streets we can do. The reason we weren't doing concrete streets before is because asphalt did not adhere to the concrete as well. But with the robust resurfacing project that we have, with this, Public Works is implementing, we feel that all the streets will eventually be asphalt, and then the speed humps could adhere to the asphalt streets better. Street width, we went from increased to 44 feet from 40 feet. There were some roadways that were just close to 44 feet, so we felt that we could expand that width to add additional locations. Street grades, this is a, one of the ones that we had a lot of conversation about, especially in the hillside communities close by. What we did was, before the limitation was 6% grade. So we were only putting speed humps on 6% grades with standard speed humps, which is what most cities and most agencies do. However, with the advent of the speed table, we can allow installation of a speed table on some of those hillside communities. So areas like Harvard and those streets in that area may be eligible for speed tables. Horizontal alignment, which is basically primary, about visibility, we want to make sure that we see the speed hump well in advance. Before, it was a stopping site distance of about 300 feet, now we've reduced it to 150 feet, which is more appropriate for a speed hump installation. Traffic volumes and speeds, before, the requirement was meeting both volume or speeding. Since these are speed, this traffic calming device designed for speeding, we want to make sure that we address volume and speeding. So we, you have to meet both the volume and speed, and speeding, speed thresholds to meet the speed hump criteria. Emergency routes, we talked about that a little bit earlier. We're going to have the speed cushion for emergency routes, and that has to have the approval of emergency services, fire department, police department, so that way they can, we don't slow down the response time. Number seven is about truck routes. Before, this is just a clarification, we are not installing speed humps on transit routes and truck routes. Number eight, the minimum speed, posted speed limit with critical speed or greater than 30 miles per hour or more. So the street must have a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour or less. And then when we do our speed threshold study, the 85th percentile has to be 30 miles per hour or more. So we want to install speed humps in an area where they're appropriate and they're addressing the right, the speeding issue, so 30 miles per hour is the threshold that we look at. And that's common amongst most cities and agencies. Traffic volume, vehicular volume is more than 40,000 vehicles per day, 5,000 cars, 5,000 vehicles per day. Anything, we feel that, that vehicles beyond 5,000 vehicles a day would cause issues. 5,000 vehicles a day is a heavy-traveled street, and speed humps would probably be, cause more of a problem than a solution in those areas. Street condition, this is something that we looked at carefully. No drainage or flooding issues. Again, the speed humps are designed to solve a problem and not create more problems. Want to make sure that the speed humps are designed appropriately and will not cause drainage or flooding issues. And the roadway must be in fair or better condition. So again, I talked about the robust resurfacing project that the city, the Department of Public Works is undergoing. We want to make sure that if a street is going to be resurfaced within a year, that we don't put speed humps in there and then they get removed with the resurfacing project. So we want to make sure we look at that appropriately, but if that's a fair or in better condition. Number 11, this was a very tricky one that I've gotten a lot of responses from residents, the confusion with the information and petition packages. If you look at the previous criteria, which is one of the attachments, it's one page. If you look at the new package, it's several pages. It may be daunting, but again, I think that it's better to provide as much information as possible so all the residents and petitioners are well-aware of what's going to be installed in their area. So we improved the format and information, and most importantly, we get this question a lot, what are the advantages and disadvantages of installing speed humps? One of the last things I wanted to make sure that the residents were aware of are the steps of obtaining speed humps. And so I made it clear, four-step process. Number one, make a request via phone, email, city website, or our brand-new, our Burbank 3.1 app. The traffic section was just launched yesterday. So that, you can, there's many ways to apply for speed humps. Step number two, we're going to do a preliminary field survey. It's conducted to determine if the location meets the criteria. And again, we went back, the other slide, you saw all the different, 11 different criteria we're looking at. We want to make sure before we have someone go out there and canvas the street, we want to make sure they even meet the criteria. So we want to do a preliminary engineering study to make sure they can meet the criteria. Step number three, if they meet the preliminary criteria, they will be provided a petition to circulate. Now, this is the most challenging part. We do need 67% of the residents to approve the installation of speed humps after they read the package. So that, this has been a challenge, and we only count one signature per a household, or we need a representative of the apartment building or a manager of the complex, because, so that we can make that easier. So that once someone doesn't have to go door-to-door to every apartment, we can just get the representative from that one building, owner of the building. Step number four, upon receipt of the valid petition, a final engineering study and design will be conducted. And this is where we're going to go out there and actually lay it out to see if there's any driveway issues, if we're covering manholes or water valves, and make sure that we can actually put these speed humps in an appropriate manner. And once that's done, when resources are available, or we can schedule, our street services department will, our Public Works Department will install the speed humps in combination with the installation of signage and striping from the traffic section. So at this time, again, we are, this is a long process that my section has worked on, and the revised policy is going to update the criteria to current standards, provide more information and certainty about eligibility requirements, tongue twister, sorry, and allow the opportunity for more residential roadways to be eligible for the program. We're recommending that the city council approve the revised speed hump policy by adopting the resolution. Again, Edward Yu, Traffic Engineer Manager, I'd take any questions if you have you.
Thank you for your presentation. I mean, obviously, it's long overdue, what, 26 years, 27 years, something like that?
Yeah, it's been a while. It's before my time.
Welcome to Burbank, yeah, before your time. Yeah, it's long overdue, a lot of complaints over the years about those speed humps, it's just too cumbersome to do anything here. 67... Yes, I got to close the hearing. Hang on a minute. You know what? We'll be back. We need to, public comment, anything? Any public comment? Madam City Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Protocol.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. He's always keeping us in line. So once again, obviously, long overdue, make it more user-friendly, more understandable. If it's not user-friendly, like you said, it went from one page to several pages, but at least it outlines it, what are the requirements, instead of having more questions, refer the public to FAQs, you know, as far as all that's concerned. But I think it's more user-friendly. Thank you for doing that.
Of course.
More that you, you know, obviously, the more information you provide to public, the more informed they are, which will tend to less questions. They don't bother you as much.
We're here to help the citizens.
Any questions, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you. 24 years, we need an update. So real quick, if you can pull up slide eight, I just wanted to run through something real quick. So the first step is to make the request, and there's a number of ways to make the request. Is it free to make a request? Or how much does it cost? Like, do we have anything?
We, it's a free, we just need to take the request, and we'll process it.
Okay. In making the request, do they have to meet all the criteria before the request is processed?
No. Once they make the request, then we'll do our preliminary engineering study.
Okay. So I mean, we give them pages and pages of criteria, but at the end of the day, they're just going to submit it, and we're going to have to figure out if it meets anyways, so...
Right.
But you're not wrong, you're not wrong. The more information we give them, maybe somebody will be like, oh, I totally don't qualify. But I'll tell you, most people just, we totally qualify, we do. One of the things I wanted to ask you, you mentioned the owner of the apartment building or the manager or representative. So when we're doing the survey on a street that has apartment buildings, does every apartment unit count as a separate household? Or is it just the building itself? Like, how is that calculated?
So we evaluate the, so that everybody has an equal vote on the roadway. We look at, we go by addresses. So if our apartment building has one address, we take the representative, the manager of the building's signature, or we take the owner of the building. And one of the comments that we've had in the past is that a petitioner would go door-to-door, and some people won't be home, or it's very cumbersome. And it, you know, the petition process is probably one of those most daunting tasks for someone, because they have to go to door-to-door. And again, with COVID and people concerned about their safety, you don't want to knock on people's doors. So we wanted to make sure that they went, we just needed one representative of that unit, of that address.
And I appreciate that. Here's my issue with it, though. If you have a street that has, you know, nine or 10 single-family homes, and then on the other side of the street, it's an R2 or R3, and there's apartment buildings, and there's nine or 10 apartment buildings, and there's a bunch of residents in those apartment buildings and fewer residents on the other side of the street, they're all using that same street. But the folks in the apartment buildings who maybe really want the speed bumps there could get voted down by just a few folks who live in the single-family home. And I understand it makes it easier to just have the address, but there's a bunch of people with a bunch of kids who are driving on that street in those apartment buildings. And so I would be more comfortable getting an accurate count of households, and I don't know if it's possible to do that, or if it's completely prohibitive for the permitting process. I mean, what is, what are your thoughts on that?
Councilmember, thank you for your question. Through the mayor, I think one thing to be cognizant of is that in a situation like that, I don't know if that would meet the actual local residential street criteria. So when we have the smaller streets, the smaller-volume streets, compared to the situation that you're describing, that's more of a secondary or a higher-volume local that wouldn't be eligible for the speed hump installation anyway?
Well, I think that falls up to my next question, because some of the streets that I am concerned for are Sixth, Kenneth, Bel Air, Sunset Canyon. Do none of those qualify for this process?
Well, again, there's the volume threshold. If they're beyond 5,000 vehicles per day, that maybe prohibit them from installation of speed humps. We may look at speed tables, something that can handle a higher volume. But again, speed humps is just one of the tools that we have in our traffic calming toolbox.
Right, right.
We're going to look at, one of the things that I emphasize is that we want to know what your issues are, the problems, and not, I just don't want to, I just don't want you to give me a solution. We want to make sure that we analyze and look at different ways of providing traffic calming. We're going to look at signage, we're going to look at striping, we're going to look at different aspects, different traffic control devices to maybe alleviate some of those issues. And to address your petition on apartment buildings, one of the challenges that we have is that, again, a lot of times, that's one of the most daunting tasks, and petitioner sometimes will not return the petition for a couple of years.
Right.
So one of the limitations we're putting on this is that it has to be returned within one year. And a lot, the other challenge we have is that someone signed, in an apartment building, they signed the petition, but they're no longer living there. So the resident that wanted it is no longer there. And again, the apartment residents are usually, they can be transient, they move around. So we want to make sure that we get the people that are having ownership in the street. I know, I understand your point. We're trying to balance it as best we can, and that's what a number of different cities are doing out there. So we kind of felt that was the most appropriate at this time. But again, next year, I could bring to you the revised, revised speed hump policy.
Well, my last question, my last question on this same train of thought. Can council request speed humps in an area that we want to see versus only going through the petition process?
Whole Foods? I mean, sorry, Raising Canes?
Okay.
Would be an example of a coordinated policy?
Yeah, recently, we installed speed humps on Reese between Oak and Olive at the direction of the council. We wanted to make sure that we still met all the requirements, though, before...
So, so, in theory, if whatever process I'm describing could happen where a group of residents gets voted down or whatever, those residents can come and petition council directly and say, hey, look, we got close, we were at 60% or 65% or whatever, and we had a hard time getting petition, it was hard to get. They can come to us directly and say, hey, council, we'd like you to agendize this and propose speed humps directly. Like, we have that process, yeah?
You do, and Starlight Estates was another example of that. And we would consider safety as the primary reason to deny even council's request, but we'd certainly would be considering it the same as if it came from the residents.
Gotcha. Okay, great. That alleviates a lot of... That alleviates a lot of the concern of what I was talking about. Just real quick, the last thing, I had one thing. Just a little note personally. I noticed in the report that it said IOB unanimously recommended. I'm kind of a stickler for this. I like it when they vote on stuff. I assume that means they voted. Can we just put voted in the staff report? Just so I feel comfortable knowing that they voted unanimously to recommend.
Of course.
Just that little word makes me feel better.
Of course.
And then one last thing, totally sidebar. Under our current ordinance or under this new ordinance, are we, is, are raised crosswalks permitted? Is that something that a resident can come forward and say, hey, there's a crosswalk here, I'd like to do a raised crosswalk? Do we have anything on the books for that?
So we don't have anything in the books for, say, again, I've been a traffic engineer for almost 29 years, and so I've kind of seen a little bit of everything. And raised crosswalks, it's kind of a new thing. It's basically a speed hump at a crosswalk. And we haven't, there aren't that many cities. I know LA has implemented a couple. One of the challenges with the raised crosswalk is it's located at an intersection most normally, and that can cause, you know, cars that are turning onto the street or buses or things like that can, the speed hump, again, we don't want to install a device that may cause more problems.
Because they're not seeing it because they're making the turn.
Correct. So we want them to, as they approach, so as you approach a speed hump, if you notice, you'll have a sign and you'll have striping. You'll have as much warning as possible. So one of the goals is that we make sure that the speed humps are very visible. And at a crosswalk and an intersection, it'll be a challenge.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I've got.
Colleagues, anything else? Any other questions? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you very much for your report. I have a question. So on slide seven, so where it's traffic volume, it should, it's like not allowed for truck vehicle volumes more than 5,000, right?
Correct. That's one of the criteria we can, like I was explaining to Vice Mayor that 5,000 is, beyond 5,000 would be too much for speed humps.
Thank you. And so on slide six, traffic volumes and speeds requires meeting both volume and speed thresholds. So that requires meeting volumes less than 5,000? Is that what that refers to?
So again, that would, that slide represented the changes that we had from the previous criteria. In the package, there is, the minimum threshold is 500 cars per day, and the maximum is 5,000. So 500 cars, we have a minimum criteria is because a lot of times we get requests from people that live in cul-de-sacs. And that's less than 500 cars per day. And in a cul-de-sac, it's usually the residents within that cul-de-sac that are speeding. So we want to make sure that we use our resources in the best way possible.
So you would use another tool there?
Correct.
Because they're still speeding.
Of course, of course. I mean, again, I know what I talked about in previous past about the traffic calming toolbox, enforcement, education, and engineering. We could look at different signage that we could put up there. We can work with law enforcement to encourage people to slow down. And we can try to do an educational campaign in the area. We can do, I'd be happy to attend, you know, neighborhood meetings or anything like that to talk about with our partnership with Burbank Police to make sure that we address those issues.
Because my concern was if there's a volume, a street that has a low volume but a heavy speed problem, that it wouldn't meet the volume threshold but could very well benefit from speed hump.
Of course. I mean, again, 500 is our threshold. But if it's within that threshold, if we see excessive speeding, we can always make accommodations for those.
Okay, thank you. And about 15 years ago, we had a speed problem on my street to Hunga above Sunset Canyon. And the slope, the grade is too high. But I learned then that there are some people just rapidly opposed to speed humps anywhere. And so in terms of the multifamily, you know, on one street, multifamily, high density on one side and lower density on the other, those same people in the high density could vote down the low density. So, so I can understand how it's an equalizer so that each side stands a chance of achieving what needs to be achieved on that street. Thank you.
You're just making it more fair for everybody.
We try our best, Mr. Mayor.
I hear you. Sometimes it's hard to accomplish. But, Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. Thank you for the presentation, by the way, thorough report. Picking up where Councilmember Springer left off, I'm looking at, I believe it's attachment four, which is the comparison with other communities. You know, generally speaking, the 5,000 maximum volume per street makes sense to me. But the one outlier is our neighbor, Glendale, who has a 10,000-vehicle maximum. And so I'm just wondering, in your research, looking at that community, are there distinct features of Burbank roads that you feel that's not a doable number in our community? That 10,000 would create problems?
10,000, again, 5,000 is extreme. Normally, a residential street has about three, the threshold we look at is 3,000 to 4,000 cars per day, and that could be too much. We're trying to tailor this speed hump policy to Burbank. I know Glendale has different criteria, different, the ways of their, they want to manage their traffic in the area. In fact, I just talked to the city traffic engineer over there, and we talked about our criteria. And he actually wanted a copy of our new revised speed hump policy because they're looking at revising theirs also. So 10,000, from my experience, is too much because of the fact that it could cause rear-end accidents, could cause more problems with more noise. If you look, there's a good table about advantages and disadvantages in the package. One of the disadvantages is noise. Every time a car goes over it, it's going to make a clumping noise, potentially. So 10,000 cars making that in front of someone's house every day could be very disturbing.
Any other questions, Collins? Councilmember Frutos?
So what would a resident do if they put speed bumps in their neighborhoods, a quiet bedroom-type community? They got speed bumps. And after five, six months, hey, this is really terrible. I can't sleep at night. Dum, 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 dum. How do we rammy that? Or we just say, hey, you guys got the 67% signatures, and you're stuck with it now? What's the recourse for that resident?
That's a great question, and we do have a reversal process. So again, it's the same process. 67% of the people have to request the removal of the speed humps. So we're addressing both sides in every aspect that we can.
I thought you were going to refer them to a Realtor. Councilmember Springer?
Sure. I just have one, another comment. When we were engaged in the traffic calming on my street, some people said, oh, you know, our property values are going to go down. So we did a study to check streets that had speed humps against the values of those who didn't. And because they existed in Burbank, and there was no difference, and there was no impact on value of a speed hump. And in some cases, the residents felt that it enhanced, you know, especially if they had small children, they welcomed them. So just FYI, there was no reduction in value. That was a fear that some people had.
I'm going to use that, your study for when I talk to the residents.
Well, they could go do it them, it's easy enough to do, so.
That's a question we get quite often, quite asked.
Vice Mayor?
My last comment on this will be, you know, that 10,000 threshold might capture some of the streets that I mentioned, the ones on the hillside that run parallel to Glen Oaks. And I wouldn't want to increase it to 10K because then you're going to get a bunch of streets thrown in. But the one change I'd like to make to this, and it's not in the ordinance, but in our recording of permit requests, I would like to see if this comes back to, or at least keep a running tally, which streets get the most permit requests and denials? Because I have a feeling that the streets that I mentioned, they're going to get people requesting and requesting and requesting. Because anyone who drives along Glen Oaks gets it in their mind that they can cut through a bunch of traffic on Sixth or Kenneth or Bel Air or Sunset Canyon. And I know we get a lot of volume there. But I think there could be some benefit to taking a look at how many people put in permits and deny them, and having those come back. And that way, the city council can make changes as needed in specific streets to really address a demand from the residents, not necessarily a blanket thing that might have unintended consequences, but targeting streets specifically.
Councilmember, question, permits or speed hump requests?
So speed hump requests.
Yes.
That we deny. So I want to keep a running tally of which, how many we deny. Because if we're getting a bunch of requests in areas where they're getting, you know, it's 5,500 or 6,000 or 7,000, and that's the denial, and people keep asking for it, but we're like, wow, it's 5,000, sorry. I would like to be able to have city council look at those numbers and say, look, there's an entire group section here. I'm not saying it's those streets specifically, but maybe in the future, we might be getting a lot of requests in areas that are getting denials. And we might be able to make exemptions here, on this board, for specific streets that are close to that number. And maybe we can fudge it a little bit.
Sure. And Mr. Mayor, council, one of the things that is not in tonight's report, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Yu. Once the determination for denial of a request occurs, it will be 12 months before it could be requested again. Is that true?
A lot of times, what, that is correct, Director Berkman. And one of the challenges we have is not necessarily the criteria, not meeting a criteria that we've discovered. It's the petition process, and that's a very important process as Councilmember Frutos brought up. Some people may not want a speed hump in front of their house, a sign, or de-escalation of property values. So again, this is, the speed on process and what I've talked to other cities, it's an evolving process. And those exact thoughts that you have brought up have been discussed. And again, we do give you the opportunity to bypass petition process, I would call it, where you can represent the community on the petition process. But the eligibility, the criteria, again, we, and I keep on going back to this, we want to make sure that we're installing something that's beneficial and not a problem.
Sure, sure. No, I understand that. My only thought is, when someone comes to us, they're saying, hey, I got denied. And then, you know, other residents in that street, the same thing. They come to us and say, hey, I want it there. For us to be able to ask you, hey, how many other permits were in that area or on that street or in that neighborhood that were denied based on criteria rather than failing the permit? Because if it fails at the permit thing, then that means the residents don't want it, right? That's a whole different argument. But to not be able to go to that process and get denied at the qualification level, maybe because they're missing it by one criteria or they're off by just a little bit, to be able to come to us and for us to pull those numbers and say, hey, we'd like to get a report on how many petitions were denied.
Of course. We record every single request.
Great, great, thank you.
In our database.
I love it. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Frutos?
You know, that same topic, maybe a little bit different. I know one neighbor that, down by the Morrison Restaurant, right off Magnolia. She's a long-term apartment dweller. And she's been constantly wanting speed bumps, parking restrictions, you name it. And she tried the petition, and she failed twice. So I went there to talk to some of the neighbors, come to find out that the one neighbor, because every neighborhood has got their own uniqueness, their own neighborhood watch, their own, you know, and it's okay, that's part of living in a community. And, you know, I went there and, you know, I was looking at some of the reasons why the city said no. And then I started just randomly just stopping at different neighbors, just a door knocked them and, hey, you know, tell me about this. And it basically claimed down and says, no, we don't have a problem here. She's the problem because she wants the front of her house kept free from anybody parking in front. So I just take a different viewpoint that, you know, I mean, there are trained professionals that is, for one council member only, I try to weigh it in and understand the uniqueness of individual neighborhoods because sometimes we don't get the full story. They'll say, hey, I've been rejected four times, and I want the council to, you know, overrule city staff and make a decision and tell them, no, I'm on speed bumps there. Whoa. Each neighborhood is very unique and, you know, they're neighbors. And, you know, sometimes, you know, we get caught up in the middle. We become the pawn in the big chess game.
Decision, exactly. You know, I've said for a long time, real quick, there's three, three-sided story, your side, my side, and the truth. I mean, that's what it comes down to. Go ahead.
What I'm saying is, I would love, if a resident did that for us, I would love to be able to go and say, well, how many other people filed a permit? And if that's the only person, and they file every time, then it's like, it's obvious. It's like, okay, you're on your own. But if everybody in that neighborhood is trying to do it, and there's a common thing, that's different, right? And I think, thank you for saying that you record all these because that can be used. I'm sorry, hey, they, look, you're the only one. That's it, so.
I've had many discussions with residents about the challenges and the balance of addressing their concerns.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Schultz?
No, no. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just two questions. Mr. Yu, in my conversations with former Councilmember Murphy, I thought there was a policy prior to 1996, maybe a speed hump policy back in 1990. Are you sure this is the earliest policy we could find?
Again, I, this is what I've, my staff researched, and I apologize if there was something earlier. We can definitely dig that up and present it if you would like.
Okay. And I just, no, I just wanted to know, but I'm comfortable with the recommendation. The only other thing I would add in response to the vice mayor, if what you're seeking is reporting out on data that's collected, one suggestion might be, like we were talking about last week with the police commission, I don't know if it'd be more appropriate IOB or transportation. I'm not a liaison to either of those bodies. But I would imagine any of those board members or commission members could certainly ask about that information, and you'd be able to provide it. Is that right, sir?
That's correct.
Okay. So that would just be maybe my suggestion to my colleagues who are liaisons to that body, that maybe that's something they could do if you want to know, for example, how many applications on Sixth have been denied.
We just can't provide private information, but we can definitely give a count.
Right, just ballpark whole numbers.
Right.
Okay. Well, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, if that's appropriate.
Well, let me ask, anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution of the Burbank City Council adopting the revised speed hump policy.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any other questions? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Fruitos?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
And Mayor Telemontes?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, twenty-four years into making. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next report is the introduction of an ordinance amending Section six dash one dash one five zero one of the Burbank Municipal Code relating to prima facie speed limits on certain segments of the San Fernando Boulevard between North City Limits and Lincoln Street. Mr. Berkman, please bless you. Public Works Director, please present the report.
Yes, sir. Good to see you again, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Speed limits are set in accordance with the California Vehicle Code, Burbank's Municipal Code, and in accordance with the guidelines of the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the California Supplement. Every seven years, Public Works hires licensed professionals to conduct field studies and produce an engineering and traffic study, survey to set speed limits on our roadway system, and the last one was completed and approved by council on July twenty-seventh of last year. However, at council's direction, a couple of northerly segments of San Fernando Boulevard were excluded from the ordinance due to concerns with the study's recommendations to increase their speed limits five miles per hour. Subsequent to council's action last summer, Assembly Bill forty-three was enacted, which amended the vehicle code to allow jurisdictions to establish speed limits based upon immediately previous surveys, which brings us to the action before you tonight. The immediately previous surveys established the speed limits on the San Fernando Boulevard segments being considered tonight as follows. North city limit east of the railroad tracks at Claybeck Avenue to Winona thirty miles per hour. The north city limit west of the railroad tracks at Cohasset Street to Hollywood Way at forty miles per hour, and also Hollywood Way to Lincoln Street at thirty-five miles per hour. So, given that no lanes have been added to these segments, and the reduction is no more than five miles per hour from the speed limits of the twenty-twenty-one study, last year's study, and it's consistent with the immediately prior speed limit, the council may introduce and at a subsequent meeting approve, adopt the ordinance in your packet, that's Attachment One, to reestablish the previously adopted speed limits and allow enforcement. Staff respectfully recommends that the city council introduce the proposed ordinance and consider its adoption at a future meeting. Mr. You and I and our city attorney remain here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have two comments.
Okay, thank you. First speakers, Mr. Mike Hollis, followed by Mr. Jason Lewis. Welcome.
Good evening. Mike Hollis, I'm here on behalf of Walkbike Burbank. As you know, Walkbike Burbank is the local chapter of the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition. So I had the opportunity to speak back in July of twenty-one when you were considering the speed limits along this section. Happy to be here in person, by the way. I brought up some concerns that Walkbike Burbank has along this section, and there was some information that passed in the course of that discussion that was helpful. Mr. Berkman pointed out that, you know, with, now with AB forty-three, or at that time, he said AB forty-three will allow us, allow agencies to be more flexible in setting speed limits. So that's one of the real advantages here in my eyes. And then, and Mr. Berkman also said that, once this is law, we will have the opportunity here in Burbank to look at other sections, street sections, that may need lowering. And that's what I'm here to talk about tonight in particular. I feel like, you know, a year ago, you were all ready to keep the speed limits down and not move them up, and I know that you're going to go ahead and do that. I feel confident in that. But I would like to ask that it not be the end of the speed limit reductions that you look at in the city of Burbank. Cities with, streets with schools, streets with parks, streets that have bike lanes that don't have enough room already, and we've raised speed limits up higher than they should be. So please take this as an opportunity to use the tool of AB forty-three to lower speed limits. I also want to throw out there one for my friends in the Rancho District, lowering the speed limit on Riverside Drive. Also, back in July of twenty-one, I commented that the Burbank Bike Master Plan calls for a Class One bike lane upon that section of San Fernando. And Mr. Berkman was happy to point out that that particular project is in design, which prompts a couple of questions for me. How long has it been in design? I'd love to know. And then also, he said that it should be ready, design should be complete in spring of twenty-three. That's coming up. So I would ask, are we on schedule? When will the public have a chance to look at those plans? Also, we have another major project in the Chandler Bike, Chandler Bike Path Extension. When will we see that? We'd like an update. Thank you very much. See you next week.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jason Lewis. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I come here tonight as a resident, driver, cyclist, pedestrian, I'm also a transportation commissioner. Needless to say, I get my use out of our streets. But tonight, we've heard many sides of a common thread, problematic car traffic. The solution we've identified is slower speeds. And I'm an engineer as well, and I know that these engineering solutions take time and money, but they save lives and money in perpetuity. Speed limits are one tool that should be used, but it's not the only one. We've done master planning for how getting, how we get people to work, and now we're trying to master plan in real time of how we get consumers to businesses. We should do what we can to support all the stakeholders. Properly designed roads make the best use of our public rights of way when everyone is safe and included. Wide, straight, long roads invite speeding and dangerous driving. We should be making Burbank the city people will come to to slow down in and spend time and money here. We are a city that is nearly surrounded by freeways. Everyone is a short drive from a sixty-five mile per hour trip out of our city limits. We should consider narrowing our traffic lanes, including roundabouts and traffic circles. Our Public Works Director can educate us on the difference between the two. We're not just making it harder to drive, we're making it easier and more accessible for people on foot, on bike, in wheelchairs, skateboards, roller skates, et cetera. And finally, I will close by saying, we have great first responders in this city, and they do their job well, but they respond to a collision that's already occurred. We need to be engineering our streets to ensure that they don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker, Madam City Clerk? Okay, thank you. So move to a discussion, colleagues, or a motion? Vice Mayor?
I have a question as it pertains to the section of San Fernando. Mr. Berkman, or Mr. You, the bike lane project, can we just get a quick update on that and how that'll affect what's going on there and the speed limit and all that?
Sure, councilmember. It won't affect the speed limit, but we're at ninety percent design right now, and I can get the gentleman's name and number, and he can chat with me, and I'll put him in touch with the right staff who are managing that project.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's nice to see some of our commissioners here, Mr. Hollis and Mr. Lewis. So, Mr. Berkman, Mr. You, I did have two questions. So first of all, just to boil down what we're doing here tonight, correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong. About a year ago, with our latest traffic study, right, we were required under law to raise the speed limits on these segments that we're talking about tonight. We were not inclined to do that, and as a result, we haven't been able to enforce, use radar enforcement on those stretches of roads, and by updating the ordinance tonight, we'll be able to resume that immediately. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I am in favor of that, but both of the commenters spoke about something that I know we've all shared, you know, shared over the course of the last year, and that is a desire to talk about measures to mitigate traffic and pedestrian fatalities on our roads. I know that we have a future agenda item coming up with regards to Vision Zero. I won't touch on that further, but I do have one question. Mr. Hollis was absolutely correct. Assembly Bill forty-three could make a significant impact on other stretches of road in our community. So if not tonight, is that going to be part of that discussion when it comes back Vision Zero? And if not, when can we talk about it?
Councilmember, we are already looking at other streets that we can implement AB forty-three, and we're doing that with community development departments, transportation planning, and our traffic engineers. So it's an active internal assignment, if you will, and it's part of our complete our streets plans to see where we can implement that effectively and properly.
Thank you, Mr. Berkman. And just one more follow-up. I wouldn't be doing my job if I wasn't pressing you. Is there some sort of a timeline that you can provide with the community, you know, some estimate of when it could be coming back for either discussion before the council or some sort of public comment period on?
Well, we could incorporate that into the Vision Zero report. There are no specific streets right now that I can update the community on.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just a follow-up question to that. In the future, if we use AB forty-three to lower the speed limit on a street, would it then qualify for a speed hump or a speed table at some point?
If it is the proper roadway designation and thirty miles an hour and five thousand or fewer, yes.
Okay, I like that. All right.
Might qualify for a cushion of some sort, right? Colleagues, any other questions? Recommendation?
Thank you very much for, on the report. Excuse me if I'm being redundant, but did you answer Mr. Hollis's question about how long in design for this part of San Fernando and Chandler Bike Path?
I didn't at the time, but now I know it. It was at ninety percent now, but we expect final plans to be completed in about March, April of twenty twenty-three, so we can go out the bit after that.
And Chandler?
Chandler is in process. I don't have an exact date. Our community development department could have an answer for Mr. Hollis, if I'm saying that right.
Okay.
When I, I'll get his information, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So we can have a follow-up on that, right?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll email you tomorrow, get you that, and we'll trace with Mr. Hollis.
Okay, thank you. And thanks to the speakers. Thank you for coming down, sticking around.
Any other questions?
I just have another comment. I mean, I think it's just real appropriate since one, you know, one of our goals is traffic and transportation and safety, and Mr. Lewis brought up the important points of, you know, designing our streets so that first responders never need to come. So I think that's just a good goal for Burbank to have. Thank you.
But they're here at the ready, if we need them.
Of course.
Take it up. Councilmember Fruitos is a former police officer and a former firefighter.
Yeah, we want to put you guys out of a job, man, make it super safe.
So, recommendation moving forward, Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to introduce an ordinance of the Burbank City Council amending Section six dash one dash one five oh one of the Burbank Municipal Code relating to prima facie speed limits on certain segments of San Fernando Boulevard between the North City Limit and Lincoln Street.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion?
Yeah, I didn't want to introduce it because I didn't know how to say the Latin, so thanks for that.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Oh, no.
I was, council, I'm sorry. I thought he jumped in ahead of me. My apologies.
To the merits on the city clerk, to the merit, yes.
I get one less point tonight. Councilmember Fruitos?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontes, thank you.
Thank you. The final report this evening is a request to consider writing a letter to President Biden and the United States Congress to suspend the Section nine oh seven waiver to no longer provide United States military assistance to Azerbaijan. Mrs. Viviana Garzon, administrative analyst in the city manager's office, please present the report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, and members of the city council, Viviana Garzon, administrative analyst too, in the city manager's office. Per Vice Mayor Anthony's request at the September thirteenth city council meeting, I am here tonight to present a first step report for council consideration of writing a letter to President Biden and the United States Congress requesting the suspension of Section nine oh seven waiver to end, to end U.S. military assistance to Azerbaijan. On September thirteenth of this year, fighting flared up between Armenia and Azerbaijan, approximately two hundred and eighty-six people were killed on both sides. The news update from multiple sources this morning mentioned that Armenia's Foreign Minister, Ararat Merzoyan, and Azerbaijan's Foreign Minister, Jihun Berimov, met in Geneva this past weekend and held talks on a future peace treaty. City council can direct staff in one of three ways. Note and file this report, come back for a second step, or in the interest of time, as we have done before, forego the second step in the additional agenda item process and direct staff to prepare and send a letter signed by all five council members to President Biden and the United States Congress to suspend the Section nine oh seven waiver to no longer provide U.S. military assistance to the country of Azerbaijan. That concludes my report.
Thank you for the report. Councilmembers, this was your ask?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Garzon, for that report. Just some quick background for the people watching at home that keep asking about nine oh seven. You know, over thirty years ago, Congress and the president at that time, under their, you know, War Time Powers Act and whatnot, passed a military spending budget, and there was a Section nine oh seven that said we couldn't give money to specific groups that were, you know, engaging in bad behavior, and one of those countries was Azerbaijan. And historically, we know that they have done horrible things over the years, especially to the country of Armenia and the disputed territory of Artsakh, and it's troubling to me to see the current administration. They suspended Section nine oh seven, they passed a waiver so that they could give money to Azerbaijan, and it's in the vein of, you know, going against what Russia's doing, and I'm not saying that we need to do anything to help out Russia because they're doing some terrible stuff as well. But we shouldn't be making friends with folks who have harmed a lot of people, and we have to, we have to be principled about this, and I believe that there are other paths to take. So I would like to move straight past the second step and direct the city manager to write a letter directly asking Congress, asking the president to suspend that Section nine oh seven waiver, to stop sending that military aid to Azerbaijan. And if we could, please reach out to ANCA and get some language from them. They've been great partners in the community with us before we send that letter off.
I'd like to second that as well. That's a motion.
That is a motion, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in agreement with the spirit of the motion. I would just add that I did a little research on this, and, look, the administration has declared, among other things, that they've waived Section nine oh seven because it's, quote, "necessary to support United States efforts to counter international terrorism." It's kind of difficult for us to really weigh in on the merit of that because they would never share that information publicly. The only suggestion I would have to the maker of the motion, I'm assuming we're not going to send the letter to all five hundred and thirty-five members of Congress, so maybe we could target Congressman Schiff, who I believe is advancing House Resolution thirteen fifty-one, Speaker Nancy Pelosi, Senate Majority Leader Schumer, and the president. I think those four would be the most reasonable recipients of the letter.
So amended.
I would, I would add Senator Alex Padilla from California. Thank you. And Feinstein, yes, and even Brad Sherman, just so we can make sure that they all get a copy. That's what I would recommend if this is going to move forward.
So amended with those three as well. Thank you.
Does the second also amend? Second agrees as well. Any other comments? Yes.
Sorry, just before you vote, just to make sure, we will draft the letter, but we will have all five councilmembers sign it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything, Madam City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Fruitos?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
And Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Garzon, thank you for the report. This is a time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Colleagues, who wants to start? Councilmember Schultz?
I think you'll be pleased, Mr. Mayor. It's been my briefest report yet. Only three items. Thursday, September twenty-ninth, I was with Councilmember Springer at the time, serving breakfast to our employees. That was really fantastic. I know we were all there at different times. I took the last shift. The following night, I saw Councilmember Springer and the vice mayor at Burbank's first Family Pride event, and I just wanted to give a special thank you to Burbank Police Department. That was a very tough situation, and for what it's worth, I thought they handled themselves professionally and made sure that those in attendance at the event were able to safely enjoy it. Lastly, this morning, I was with you, Mr. Mayor, and I believe Councilmember Springer, for the unveiling of our Pink Police Cruiser, which I think is still parked out in front of HQ. It's, it looks great.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fruitos?
I'll be real short. Back on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, I attended the Burbank Chamber of Commerce and the Leadership Burbank Candidate Forum at Woodbury University. I want to congratulate all candidates for stepping up and wanting to get elected to public office, and I do appreciate their thoughts. And whoever gets elected, I honestly believe our city is in good hands. And on Thursday, September the twenty-ninth, I also attended the Employee Appreciation Breakfast, and I kind of worked the room, or in this case, the outside area there, just thanking employees, because, you know, there's a lot of folks that are just behind the scenes, you know, they've got their executive, you know, department heads, and we always say thank you to them, but I wanted to take that opportunity to thank the individual employees for all their commitment to the people of Burbank, to try to make this the best, great city to live in. That's it, very short. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. It was short.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. I participated in the Burbank Chamber of Commerce and Leadership Burbank Forum, and also the League of Women Voters Forum, and serving breakfast to the employees was very nice. I'm really grateful I had the opportunity to do that. And I had a Zoom with Molly Boyke, who's editor-in-chief of the Borough's School Newspaper, and that was nice. And yesterday, I met with, along with our city clerk, three senior communities, and learned some issues very important to them. And the unveiling of the Pink Cruiser this morning was very nice. Thank you.
So I'll weigh in, just a couple items. Obviously, the Employee Appreciation Breakfast. I was serving there for a couple hours. Okay, I got the early, early shift, but nonetheless, that was very beneficial and got to interact with a lot of the employees that I've known for years. So that was fun. for years. So that was fun. Sausage every now and then while I was serving. I had to, you know, keep my strength up. And then today was the unveiling of the Police Department Pink Cruiser Breast Cancer Awareness. So the people that are listening to us, I encourage you, if you have the time, take your family out to the, in front of the police fire building. They've got the cruiser out front, and take some pictures with it. It's very nice. We're very nicely done by a local merchant here in Burbank that's been here for a long time, and he's done, our last five years, he's done the rap for the police cruiser. Very nicely done. Anything else? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the employee breakfast like everyone else, and the food was really good. I did find out afterwards that all the leftover food was donated to the Boys and Girls Club, which was great because there's always an excess, right? We can never eat all the food. I tried. I tried, especially the bacon. But I'm glad that we're doing that. And in fact, later on that day, I listened in on the Burbank Care Coordination Work Group meeting, and there were some proposals there to start looking at creating a citywide network because there's a lot of events that happen where, you know, I think what was said during the meeting was, you know, it's frowned upon if the caterer doesn't bring enough food, but we never think about, what if the caterer brings too much food and we throw it away? Why is that not also frowned upon? And so to create sort of a network where we take that excess food and we find organizations that need it, and in fact, there's a state bill coming that says, you know, restaurants and grocery stores, their old food needs to be donated in certain percentages as well. So for us to start, start, be proactive on that, I think is going to be a great idea. A lot of, a lot of cities and localities are doing that. And then, of course, that, later that night, the League of Women Voters, right here in this chamber, held a number of council forums and School Board and Clerk and State Senate and Congress. So it was great. It was great to watch, sat and watched those, and I really enjoyed it, really enjoyed it. And then on Friday night, I did attend the Family Pride Event, and it was a great turnout, great music. The people were out in force and the food trucks and everything, and I want to give a special shout out to the folks who showed up to stand in solidarity with the members attending the Family Pride. These folks didn't come to attend the event, but they stood as sort of a barricade between what was going on across the street and the folks who were having fun at the Pride Event. It was nice to see community members take that stand and hold the line there, so I appreciated those folks.
Councilmember Springer?
And I know you gave a shout out to the Burbank PD, but the chief was involved very early on in the planning, and Burbank PD just did an amazing job, just from the, just from the beginning, working with that group to address their concerns. So, great job, BPD.
You know, I'd like to share something that I found out earlier this week, or last week, is that there's a new sport at the high school level. Girls' flag football is going to be sanctioned. The Southern Section, CIF Southern Section, approved it. Now it's going up to the Northern Section for the statewide approval, so that's, that's waiting for that, but it's going to be a seven-on-seven flag football for girls. It's amazing. I mean, it's, yeah. So I just wanted to share that because it is, it's, it's a good thing for the ladies at the high school level, you know? And people have asked, well, so what's, how do they move up, or what's the next, what's the next level up? We don't know until this happens for a while, and then something's developed up at the college level. But that's a good thing for high school kids, especially the girls. Anything else? Let me see. Now's the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Do members have any? Yes, Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I'd like to put on the agenda, based upon the concern from the community member publicly at the podium regarding the impound issue. I don't know too much about it, but I was wondering, just for the public's information on this one, I'd like to put that on the agenda for a public review of that, a discussion with the council members weighing in versus we get, you know, the weekly city manager's information. Just because of the nature of it, I, I don't know, sometimes I like to hear about it publicly and listen to my colleagues weigh in on questions.
So is that a first step?
Yeah, a one step, just to, basically a review of that.
We could provide an informational report related to the council approval agreement.
And because of the brown neck, I want to get spanked by a good-looking attorney right here, so that's what I want. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, the first step on the possibility of the creation of Burbank's own housing voucher program.
Okay, anyone else? All right. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, October 11th, for a joint meeting in the council chamber. The public may view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following four ways: in person for general public comment, public hearings and reports to council, by calling in directly to the council meeting, by leaving an e-comment to the city webpage, or by emailing the city council directly. Thank you and good night. Be safe. We're adjourned.